It's been an absolute joy transitioning with Gina. You've made the right decision. And we spent an hour or two together in the day on different matters and, you know, she's been doing a great job. She's been doing a great job. So she might have some things that she wants to talk about in terms of maybe a forest study session in July, which I think is appropriate because I think there's some things that are coming, coming at me. This is just more information for you, it's not official, I just put some things together. But I, and you've seen some of my responses to concerned parents around safety. And I just wanted you to have that sort of comprehensive nature of our plan. I think that's one thing that I feel best about is it's not just one, one thing, you know, somebody thinks, well, it's just this, if you just have this, it's, it's a combination. And that's what we learned as we brought our law enforcement partners together 10 years ago. I think it's appropriate that this be assessed again. It's, it's working for us, but for example, number four, the building hardening strategies, that kind of became at odds with some of the things we're trying to do during the pandemic. You know, trying to create some airflow. Well, when you open windows and doors to create airflow to keep children safe during the pandemic, you know. So let me just really briefly mention these. Number one, far and away was the video security. And I wanted to really point out that it was a big deal then, that it was not surveillance. Big difference between a video security system and a video surveillance system. There's no one on the other end watching what people are doing. You know, this was put in place at a time when there was concern that the federal government, I remember one parent opted her kindergarten daughter out of art because she was convinced that we were taking the DNA from the art project and sending it to the federal government, you know. So surveillance was a concern 10 years
Were we?
Listen, Jan, the last day of school, we had 75 kindergarten children in the boardroom. There's a lot of DNA in there. There's a lot of DNA in that. I don't want to digress, but this is quick, they had walked up here from Roosevelt, I'd read to their class, and then they had written some little books they wanted to give them. And the minute they got there, they need the bathroom and the, and the fountains, and I said, your teachers are going to help you with that. And we had an employee, Carrie Butler, that was in the restroom. And here come all these children that you send, and she said, one of them said, I love him because he loves me and he loves us all, but before you know Carrie's in there. It was a fun day. It was a fun girl day. But the, the real key on the video security system, I just want to make it very clear to you, is that a police vehicle can access any of those cameras right on their vehicle. So if there was ever an incident, a police vehicle approaching can access the camera and see exactly what's going on. That's one of the things law enforcement said, if we, if we know what's going on, it allows us to come harder and faster. It's also can be streamed into a central control system.
Command center.
Yeah, yeah, central command center.
That's a big volume.
Yeah. So the video security is foundational. This, this was millions of dollars to install throughout the district. Second was a standard response protocol. We did not have at that time a very good standard response protocol. Jan, Art, Lori will remember Carl Bruce's multi-color, I don't know how many colors there were. You know, you'd go into code lavender, or code, you know, whatever, and you gotta try to find your book to figure out, what do I do in code burgundy? You know, I, you know. And so, and the SRP that we selected, and you're talking about Lex, I really attribute this to Lex and Chris Zimmerman, was from the I Love You Guys Foundation. If any of you are wondering about I Love You Guys, this, this was a father, and I'm forgetting his name right now, I've met him, just a quality guy, he's just dedicated his life to this. But his daughter was in a mass shooting in Colorado, wasn't Columbine. And right before she was murdered, she wrote, I love you guys. And the U is just a U. And that, that's her final text to her parents before. And he, he has done so much work. Well, we were the first entity in Utah to adopt this, I Love You Guys, the standard response protocol. And since then, I believe every district I know, the state of Utah, has adopted it. It is the widely accepted SRP. The important thing here, you know, sometimes people would say, we need to have an active shooter drill. And, you know, as I worked with law enforcement, they would say to me, it's not very important that you know what we're going to do, it's just vital that we know what you're going to do. We have to know what you're going to do. I never saw the advantage of traumatizing children by creating some, you know, real-life like simulation of an active shooter drill. I just thought that, I don't, I don't know what that gains you, because all the law enforcement partners that we were having said that, we don't care if you know what we're going to do, we just have to know what you're going to do. Which allows them to begin to come harder and faster. A lot done with SROs, but I think working with Gina and Lane, that's probably something that could be revisited. But we went through an extensive process at that time to review, update, and, and make adjustments to our SRO agreements, and how many days they were in schools, and, and what the, you know, how the payment would be. We've got a, a very specific formula that we all had agreed to, and I think it's a fair formula. Um, you know, I, I, we, we worked hard on that formula. And again, I attribute that to Chris, did a really nice job with that.
Jeff, I, I have a question on that. Just at our elementary schools, what is, what is
It's, it's, it's not as much, and that's why I think, Jan, it's worth revisiting.
Well, I'm just curious, because I had a parent ask me, how often are they there?
As needed.
You know what, Jan, I think it depends a little bit on the SRO too, because I, being at different elementaries, Mike Chatlin, when I was a pioneer, he made a point to come more often, like, he would come twice or three times a week and stop by and spend some time. When I was at Washington Terrace, they didn't come like
I know when I was at Freedom, Shane Campbell was there.
Yeah. Mike, Mike made a point to be there.
I, I, I think, I think number three and number four, areas of this plan that, as you review with Lane, and I'll tell you, we're, we're blessed again as a district to have Lane, you know, because just like Chris had all those contacts back then, Lane has all those contacts now, and great credibility. So I felt like all along, and Janice, I know that, that there'd been a constituent who had talked to you about it, I felt all along, I wanted law enforcement out in front of this, giving us the direction, as opposed to us kind of coming together as lay individuals, not with law enforcement expertise, to come up with a plan.
It's like the health department on the 15th.
Absolutely. There are times that it's, there are times that it's wise to turn it to the experts.
So would this be, be part of our policy manual or something?
I don't know that it would be in your policy manual, and there's some parts of this that I'll point out to you that I would not put in policy. There's some parts of this that very few people know, and I wouldn't advertise it. The next one, the building hardening strategies, I think there's some things that can be updated there. For example, I think Lane, we had, and again, those in the district will know, the magnetic strip on the door, a way to lock the door without the teacher having to go out in the hall, fumble with the keys, you know, to try to lock the door. We had a strategy for that. I think there are better strategies, and Lane's been looking into that. So I, I, I think that, there's some areas there. We're, we're doing a lot of work with, with secure entrances. And Gina, I know that, that there are four elementary schools that have a similar model that, that Freedom, Plain City, West Haven, and, no, they're, they're already, they've got a secure, but, but they were going to be done this summer, and you might just follow through.
So similar to what Midland City was?
What we would, no, well, just in the sense, Jan, if you think, every school has a different, our older schools have different layouts. And so what we've done is identified those schools who had sort of common layouts, and we designed a secure entrance for those schools, and then build out those schools. And, and Plain City, West Haven, Freedom, and for some reason, I'm just forgetting the, the fourth one right now, they have a common layout. And so Scott and his folks have designed a secure entrance model, and those should go in the summer.
You ended up having good
But they've got it now. There, there was
Like, there are security entrances at, like, North Fire
Asian guys.
Well, Longview, Roosevelt, you know, a lot. So again, what, what we were doing is identifying schools that had common layouts, designing a secure entrance model for those schools, and then going in and taking care of them. But we're working on Cody's budget, which you'll see tonight, has not changed in over 10 years. We need to increase that a little bit. Okay, so I think three and four for sure are some areas that, that I would say they need to be reviewed and, and probably updated. Number five, we knew we needed some kind of a way for students to report. This is so vital, and I can't tell you how many times Gina knows, Art knows, Lori knows, how many times we've been tipped off by a student, by someone who, who knows. So that's a key part of that. Now, originally, we had developed our own system, just internally. Our tech folks developed our own reporting system. But since then, we've just adopted the Safe UT app, and it's a great app, okay? Now, Doug, here's the part that I wouldn't get out. We have, the model is called the Sigma Threat Assessment Model, and Lane kind of heads this process up. But on a monthly basis, there are representatives from all through the county, and I'm talking juvenile court, law enforcement, Weaver Morgan Health, you know, all of these different agencies that are coming together. At any given time, we probably have five to six names.
Actually, we've been going, Gina and I have been on it. We, we watch.
Of, of individuals that are, that are carefully reviewed. And this Sigma Threat Assessment Model, it's actually a model that universities were using quite a bit of. We brought them in, had, it was on a Saturday, we had an all-day training on a Saturday, just with the board at that time, and decided that that's the model that, that we wanted. So the Sigma Threat Assessment, again, it just underscores the comprehensive nature of our plan. It can't just be one thing. If you'll just do this, then you're, you're safe. It's a comprehensive plan, okay?
Jeff, can I just add one thing? The Previdence Threat Assessment that we do on students that have made threats, we also have that as part of number six as well. So we're doing threat assessments on these kids with our mental health specialist Zach Lane, so that's a, that's
They come a pie or
Thank you. That's a, that's a, that's a big, that's a big part of, and, and I think, Gina, that almost fits into the, the threat management, you know, the threat management. So when you have some legitimate threats out there, and, and, and you can take them through that risk assessment, through the Previdence Model, it, it's just a powerful thing. So please know that in our district right now, there is a comprehensive plan in place for student safety. Can it be improved? Absolutely, always. It wouldn't surprise me, because I'm hearing that there is a possibility that Congress could strike a deal, maybe even later this week. And if they do, I'm certain that money will come for mental health and for school security. So that, because those are both things that the Republicans are asking for. So if they're able to strike a deal, I'm confident that it will come with some money.
But there's good collaboration on the two of those in our district. I mean, they seem like almost dovetail together.
So, so that you guys are aware, you know that we have a mental health specialist in every high school that just stays at the high school. And now we, we're going to increase and have a mental health specialist at every junior high, four days a week. The principals have asked for that, they saw the need was that great. So that, that's an increase of, they were only there two days a week, now they're going to be there four days a week. It'll also, it'll also increase the time that the mental health specialists are down at the elementary, because we're adding five new mental health specialists.
Taking it to 20.
Taking it to 20, so.
Lori's done a great job with that, honestly. I would add that.
Yeah.
Honestly, I would add that to this piece. Yeah. It's, it's very much a part of, you know, our overall plan.
Safety.
And we didn't have it 10 years ago, but I, I truly believe that that becomes a part of it. And, you know, we know if we identify and assess the level of risk and get some intervention through our LCSW, so our mental health specialists, this is powerful.
That poor school is majestic.
Majestic.
I just texted Larry.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, that mental health, to me, is the part where we're taking, where we're addressing the problem, not the symptom.
Yes, yes.
And it's been so amazing that kids can have immediate access to that. It's just, it's, yeah, it's been impressive to watch that team. And Zach has done a great job of, of leading that. So I, I feel like our district probably has one of the best systems in place.
I agree.
Like, anybody
I agree.
Yeah, so.
And, and I think it strengthens this plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks, Michelle. Just, we had Zach speak at US Boat, this is a familiar thing, and, because, and he was exceptional, and many of the other districts, they, they don't have Zach.
Yeah, he teased tape in this and just does such a great job.
Go ahead, Gina.
All right, do you want me to just, I'm going to throw this out to you, another handout for him. So what I thought I would give you tonight is just kind of an overview of what's been going on as we've been transitioning a little bit, and then also where we're headed. Jeff mentioned that in July, we're going to need to pull together on a, some sort of a, a study session, and I listed that for you down towards the bottom, and talked, and maybe even working with Jeff today, we, we've listed some tentative agenda items, agenda discussion items there for that particular meeting. So we'll meet with Pam, and we'll figure out, it sounds like Fridays tend to be the best day for, for all involved, and try to work with your schedule. I know July is a really busy month with all the holidays and everything, but we do need to get ready for that.
Well, it's, it's the month of death.
It is.
So things are written out, you shut down.
She told me that.
The month of, is it her birthday? So the whole month is taken.
I'll stay away from that date.
It's the month of July, 13th.
It's her birthday.
It's the month of death.
I mean, I'm going to adopt that.
But anyway, I, I just kind of wanted to point that out. Pam will be reaching out, and I, I hope you're, you're all okay with this. I would like to meet with each of you individually in the next few weeks, and, and just for about an hour, 45 minutes to an hour, and the, the main reason for that would just be to get to know you better. And, and I'll have a couple of guiding questions that I'll send to you before we meet, and I'm glad to come your way. I'd love to sit out on the porch with you, wherever you, wherever you're comfortable, I can meet you someplace, but make it convenient for you. But I just, I'm really interested in spending a little time with each of you individually. So I was hopeful that that would be okay across about a six-week period, we could find a day for each of you. I know you're so busy, and I want you to make your, your cruises and things that I hear, all these fun things that are going on, the priority for sure, so I'll work around you. But these are just some things that we, at the new superintendent that's been appointed, have been doing. I wanted to let you know one thing that's been just so interesting, and it speaks to this great guy's leadership, and Art and Lori, and this great board. We've been doing listening sessions with all of our school employees, and they've been virtual, and we're going to continue and finish those up here in June. And we're meeting with all of the different departments here at the district level here in June. There's been so much positive, related in those meetings about how things are going well in our district. One of the things we're seeing though, we, we've got a few little areas that we popped up, and as we're looking at things, what we're finding is two or three things that are rising to the surface could be trends that we can focus on going forward with some strategic planning, some ones in the discussion topics. So I wanted to let you know that we have been conducting those, and they've been very beneficial, and I will share that information with you all as we talk and start strategic planning. But I wanted to also throw just some, some upcoming events at you, that you're always welcome to stop by. Learn Conference is coming up in June. I know that Nick Harris and his great team have put a lot of time and effort, they're, they hit a peak in number of participants this year, so if you'd like to pop in and remember high school, I wanted to point those dates out for you on June 15th and 16th. I'm planning to go to the Youth Build graduation ceremony. It's a little later this year, but that's the last graduation ceremony, and I just wanted to let you know that we're that, when that's happening and taking place. Janice, I think you're, we're headed to a meeting tomorrow, maybe JLC.
Yes, they did give them the option for Zoom.
Okay, you might go that route.
Yeah, I was going to grab you, too. But thank you so much.
Yeah, I think I'll, I'll attend that. I just wanted to show you also, we've got a few meetings planned with district leadership. We are really trying to spend this, this month getting everybody transitioned into their new roles, their new offices, and starting to do some team building. And so you need to know that that's going to be a lot of the summertime, is trying to get everybody oriented into their new roles. And then in August or September, and I'll, I'll let this, this great body guide this, but I would like to sit down and start a little bit of more of an in-depth discussion around some strategic planning. When Jeff and I spoke, it's time for a new strategic plan
We did that.
Perfect. Perfect. But I think I'd really like to, to, to spend the summer getting everybody kind of settled in, if that's okay. We have so much organizational change, there's a lot right now. And folks are trying to find their way and come together, and we're going to be spending some time doing that, and I'll keep you abreast of things, but I, I thought that probably the best timeframe would be August, September-ish, to bring this, this group together to start having some of those more in-depth discussions, if that's okay. This is completely tentative, I'm open to suggestions and timelines, if you have any ideas or suggestions, if I missed anything, just wanted to give you an idea of what's, what's going on across the next few weeks, okay?
Great.
Is that okay?
I was wondering, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
I guess, I, I know the sermons of I in one of that line items, libraries, books, and materials, I guess you saw that email from Stuart Campbell, everybody.
Well, it's, you know, there's, there's public comment tonight, and I think, you know, you maybe hear something on libraries, you maybe hear something on, on safety and, you know, whatever. I think you, I, I'm not going to engage in a conversation with the individual, whoever speaks, I think this is their time to speak. But if there's something that I feel like you need to be, you know, related to that subject, for example, with the library, I'll just kind of walk through the fact that House Bill 374, which was passed this last session sponsored by Representative Ken Ivory, initially there was a, an opinion issued by the Attorney General's Office, and that opinion differed from the Office of the Legislative Council. Last week, the Attorney General tried to clarify that, I think that was done on the second or third of, I mean, just within days of now. And so I would just recommend that you're working closely with Gina, Heidi, you know, to get the correct interpretation. One of the challenges that, that you're walking here is, when this has come up before with the Supreme Court, they, they've kind of put, they've, the, the case in, that really is the landmark case is PICO versus Board of Education. And, and one of the things the court expressed is that the corollary of free speech is the freedom to receive ideas. And so just, you know, almost randomly pulling books from the shelf is also a violation of the First Amendment. And so it's an interesting, and that is the landmark case on removing books from libraries. So I think what the Attorney General's doing is trying to line up 374 with the specific language in the bill. The Office of the Legislative Council, as I understand it, is saying, but the intent was different than the language, and that's kind of created a little concern. You say, okay, well, all we can deal with is the language, not what's the intent. So there's a little ambiguity. I'll just, in, in much shorter terms than that, if, if Stuart Campbell speaks, I'll just make a public comment on that and say, I would recommend that over the coming weeks, that the board works with the new superintendent and in-house legal counsel as we get that clarification from the state board, from the Attorney General's Office.
But it is clear, and it is in writing, that we're looking to that. I mean, they can do that.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's clear and it's in writing, that it is on our agenda.
Yeah.
So
Yeah, it needs to, it's coming at you. This is coming at you. And I'd just be cautious not to knee-jerk.
But we're not, we don't have our heads in the sand, we're not ignoring it.
Correct.
It's there.
Yeah, yeah. And so I'll make that clear, but I'll speak to the board on that.
We don't want a $250,000 fine. We want a big fine.
Is PICO v. Board of Education, is that P-I-C-O or
P-I-C-O.
Okay.
P-I-C-O.
Thank you.
Yeah. P-I-C-O. Yeah, that one's coming at you. And I think safety is coming at you.
Yeah.
So, and, you know, we're in a good place on both of those, and again, with Gina and Heidi and leadership, you'll, you'll navigate it just right.
So you've got that on the
They said, don't knee-jerk to her. Don't knee-jerk to her, because you can get in trouble on the other side.
Exactly.
There's still, there's, well, you have the Attorney, Attorney General's Office and the Office of the Legislative Council kind of, you know, at odds is probably too strong. Just trying to interpret the, the language, and the Attorney General, as I understand it, was looking at the specific language of HB 374, and the Office of Legislative Council was saying, but I think the intent was something different. Well
We gotta go on language, not intent.
I think that's what the Attorney General's going to say, but I'm not going to say that tonight.
And maybe the language will change, that's something.
Well, it would have to be in a bill.
Yeah, right.
So
But it might.
It could. It could. Yeah, if it stays
It's likely to.
If it stays like this, it's going to come back in a bill. You know, we probably had five bills, transparency bills, curriculum-related bills, and this was the only, Ivory's was the only one. You know, we kind of coalesced You know, we kind of coalesced around Representative Ivory's bill. And, and the others were problematic. There were some challenges to some of the other bills and they were defeated. Well.
Thank you.